Good evening, everyone. My name is Gerard Judice and I am your mayor. We're going to call to order a city council meeting of October the 28th, I believe. Yes, the 28th. And Madam Clerk, will you kindly call the roll?
24 for Marin-Sonoma mosquito invector. A little louder. I'll back up now. Sorry about that. So we are an independent special district, so similar to like a fire district or a water district. A bunch of taxpaying residents came together and said, "We want this service." And over 100 years ago, they decided they wanted mosquito control and created the San Rafael Improvement Club down in the San Rafael area. And then over the last hundred and some odd years, we've now spread and expanded. And now we comprise both Marin and Sonoma County and cover all of the towns and cities within. Under that, guys, under that organization, we have a 22-member board, which includes several that are from appointees of cities as well as two from both counties at large. So Marin and Sonoma County both have an appointment. Our funding is provided through property taxes and benefit assessments. And if you've looked at your property bill, you'll probably see our name now near the bottom. That's a part of the benefit assessment, but that money goes to providing mosquito and vector control services in both Marin and Sonoma County. Our mission is to protect the health and welfare of the communities that we serve from mosquitoes and vector-borne diseases utilizing cost-effective and environmentally responsible integrated vector management practices. Couple of big words in there. Vector. Vector is anything in our world that can transmit a disease from one place to another. So a mosquito, a tick, a flea, sometimes a rodent, kind of depends on the disease and what we're talking about. And then integrated vector management, I have a slide later on, but basically it's utilizing the right tools for the right job. So every situation calls for a different set of tools. And based on our surveillance and our information and our scientific know-how, we identify which set of tools are most appropriate for each control activity. Agency at a glance here, so you can see, as I mentioned, we comprise both Sonoma and Marin County. We have 36 full-time employees covering 2,300 square miles, which is a lot. And then on a seasonal basis, we bring on between six and eight seasonals hovering between our surveillance department and lab and our operations department. We currently have four vacancies that we're trying to fill. Two of our county-at-large positions for Marin and Sonoma, and then the town of San Amosmo and Ross. We hover around about $12 million annually for our budget minus any sort of capital expenditures. And in general, that covers everything that we need to do. What kind of services do we provide? It's like my slide got a little bit off alignment here. We've already talked about mosquito control. It's in our name. It's kind of what I would consider our bread and butter. It takes up largely about 70% of our time. We are out there every day identifying sources that are breeding mosquitoes, trying to get them before they become adult mosquitoes, trying to keep them from biting people. That's our goal, whether it's controlling the mosquitoes, educating people about how to not get bit by mosquitoes, or ultimately trying to reduce transmission once disease transmission occurs. Those are the mosquito control ABCs. Within that, we also utilize mosquito fish, which is a nice biological tool for getting rid of mosquitoes in areas where they're appropriate. They're a fantastic deputy of mosquito control for us. We can place them into habitats and they'll do control until that water goes away, which in some instances is never. One of the big deals that we had this year is yellow jackets, and I have a slide later on that we'll talk about, but we do in-ground yellow jacket nest control. So we'll come out to your property and we'll treat the in-ground yellow jacket nest as long as you've identified that you're in Marin or Sonoma County and to you know where the nest is. So we had over 6,800 yellow jacket calls this year. So our technicians were literally sprinting every day, doing probably between 12 and 15 different control activities per person per day. We were getting about 400 to 500 calls a week. So the more we know about where those yellow jacket nests are specifically, the quicker and easier we are able to respond. Rodent advice and inspections, so we don't do rodent control, but we will come out to your property, will identify areas where you could have a better experience with our friendly neighborhood rodents, basically exclusion, harborage, things that you can do around your property to reduce those animals from being in your yard or getting into your home. And then we'll provide you a report that you can either do your own rodent control or you can hire a private pest control company to come in and do your rodent control for you. Additionally, we do school presentations. We really love the outreach that we provide. Our education specialist is out in schools every day, and she's teaching them about a variety of different things that's not only specific to the work that we do, but also matches the curriculum of the grade levels for each of the schools. So she's able to go in, provide a supplementary lesson that should match and dovetail with what's being taught with that grade level. And teachers like it, gives them a little bit of a break, and we're able to get information out there to everybody through the children as well as to the adults that then hopefully go home and tell about those cool presentations they learned at school. And then finally insect identification. So we have a variety of entomologists on staff, myself included, that can ID insects and can provide you at least with a place to start if you're trying to identify how to deal with whatever insect issue that you're dealing with. If it's not a vector, we're still happy to ID it for you and give you some tips as to where to start. Here's integrated vector management. I'm not going to go through the whole slide, but basically all these different things serve as facets of our both surveillance components as well as our control components. So again, utilizing the toolbox, figuring out which tools most important are most appropriate for each situation, and then bringing those tools to the control decision. That's what integrated vector management is. Those tools include surveillance, information, outreach, biological control, source reduction, microbial control, chemical control. There's a variety of tools that we have in our toolbox. And here's a nice photo that I think is a little easier way to summarize all that information. 2024 was a big year. Even though it was quieter on the mosquito side, we far outshone it on the yellow jacket side. This is still a running tally, as you can see, as of 1017. We've now added probably another 200 yellow jacket calls since the slide was created. So we're likely going to get over 7,000 this year, which is pretty incredible. Just for a point of comparison, last year we were at 2,100. So we're over, almost over four times now at this point. In addition, we saw increases both in mosquito fish and rodent inspection calls as well. Here we go. Yellow jackets stole the show. The good news is we've got a lot of good press, but ultimately, you know, our technicians were busy every day going out to deal with these yellow jackets. You probably saw some of the media press specifically around some of the state parks and the issues people were having in both state and regional parks with yellow jackets. And we try to partner the best we can with all the different agencies and provide as quick and responsive yellow jacket control as we can. And we, I think we did a pretty good job this year based on how excited people were to see our services and the deluge of letters and notes and everything that we've gotten back that we can give to our technicians about the great work they do. I would say it was a pretty successful year, even though we had such a busy year for yellow jackets. In terms of West Nile virus activity, the good news is we had pretty minimal West Nile virus activity. We had one positive dead bird in the city of Sonoma, which is a slight uptick from last year where we had zero across the board, but still considerably lower than what we'd see and definitely lower than the state average. By the state level, though, we did see an overall reduction from the previous year. So the trend across the board is a slight reduction in West Nile virus. And typically that's because we have either a less warm summer or even a longer cooler spring that then can lead into a shorter breeding season within the year. Still unfortunately did have West Nile virus cases and those still continue to come in, over 67 human cases statewide and just under 3,000 mosquito samples that are being tested positive. Invasive 80s is still on the tip of our tongue. So we currently don't have 80s egypti or 80s albopictus, both two mosquitoes that don't belong in California and we definitely don't want in Marin or Sonoma County. But unfortunately their territory continues to expand. And if you pay any attention to the media, it's getting closer and closer. The Bay Area is now seeing a lot of activity in Santa Clara, Santa Cruz. We have them in Solano. We have them in Contra Costa. San Mateo's had a hit every now and again. So we're really mindful of keeping an eye and surveillance specifically out for these mosquitoes. And the question would be why? You know, it's just another mosquito added to the other 26 different species that we have here in Marin and Sonoma County. Well, these mosquitoes transmit diseases that we don't currently have in Marin or Sonoma County and hopefully can try to reduce in California. I used to be able to say we don't have, we don't have the diseases in California, but as of three years ago, we now have locally transmitted dengue in Southern California. And so unfortunately, I can't say that anymore. The goal now is to try to reduce those locally transmitted dengue cases and hopefully keep that mosquito from spreading because obviously it carries with it not just dengue, but chikungunya as well as Zika virus and yellow fever. So all things that we're trying to reduce and not have, be a part of our California ecosystem. So we have traps that are out readily looking for those. All of our staff are trained to identify 80s egypti as well as 80s albopictus. And we're continually monitoring what's happening with our neighboring counties to make sure that we're doing the best we can in terms of our proactive surveillance. And that's it. I went through it quick. I've made this longer and shorter in the past, and I've tried to give you guys some time for questions because I know you have a busy agenda tonight.
Sure. And thank you for the presentation. I will turn to my colleagues for questions and/or comments. Please.
Peter, thank you very much, especially for your response to my question. I had him make just one slide that we can put on our social media page. It basically showed-
It's in the basin of a potted plant, you know, so yeah, bottle cap. I mean, really, as long as it stays for over three or four days, it's a potential mosquito conducive to 80s egypti. But there's also a big transport cord conducive to 80s egypti. But there's also a big transport corridor that moves up right along that red line. So you can almost draw the five freeway all the way up there. And my previous district before I came to Marin-Sonoma is that little purple one at the top, Shasta, and we had both egypti and 80s albopictus. And we think it's part of that because these mosquitoes, they can, their eggs can stay dry for long periods of time, months at a time. So people can be in Southern, their eggs can stay dry for long periods of time, months at a time. So people can be in Southern California where there's active 80s egypti and dengue happening, they can pack up and it's probably in your yard.
Okay. And then my other question was about the, about the yellow jackets. Okay, those were my questions. Wanted to say that I have a friend, wanted to say that I have a friend who had used, who had used your services in the past and-
Say it's not effective, so there's really not, say it's not effective, so there's really not a really good proactive way. I mean, the good proactive way. I mean, if you do have those passive traps, to some degree, they will work. If you do have those passive traps, to some degree, they will work. They don't target the specific yellow jackets that we're looking-
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you to Jake McKenzie for, well, thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you to Jake McKenzie for coming along as well and participating in the district. We appreciate your service.
I should mention that.
My apologies.
Coming along as well and participating in the district. We appreciate your service. I should mention that. My apologies. Jake McKenzie is our board member from the city of Rona Park and has been with us for a little over a-
Singular and vital resource for local residents experiencing violence in the- Singular and vital resource for local residents experiencing violence in the place we should all feel the most safe inside our own homes. We should all feel the most safe inside our own homes. YWCA operates Sonoma County's only confidential safe house- YWCA operates Sonoma County's only confidential safe house shelter and domestic violence survivors and advocates. We are fortunate to have Stacy Questioni from-
The only one in Sonoma County. They're for families seeking refuge from harm. Safety planning and strategies to ensure relief are at the forefront of every call we receive. On average, the YWCA Sonoma County serves approximately 3,000 individuals in need per year with trauma and-
And hang tight. We'll probably have some comments and questions from council. Please.
Stacy, thank you very much. This is not easy work and you always seem so cheerful and we appreciate your contribution, especially at Rona Park. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Council member?
Same sentiment, especially now with everything happening. Thank you for everything you do. Really appreciate it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
We'll go anywhere because we're going to take a little picture.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Item 4C, and we have another open proclamation. We don't have a recipient, but I thought it was very important that we recognize that October 19th through the 25th, 2025 is United Against Hate Week in the city of Rona Park. Okay. Whereas the city of Rona Park stands for diversity, inclusivity, and respect for all, irrespective of race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, disability, or any characteristic. Whereas we reject hate, discrimination, and violence, aiming for a prejudice-free community and collectively promote acceptance, respect, tolerance, and unity, enabling residents to live, work, and thrive without fear. Whereas the United Hate Week campaign embodies our collective commitment to foster an environment where every resident can live, work, and flourish without fear of hatred. Whereas we endorse the California vs. Hate Coalition's mission to combat hate, prejudice, and intolerance, and encourage communities to report hate incidents to the California vs. Hate Hotline. Whereas by joining with our fellow California citizens, we send a resounding message that we are united in our resolve to combat hate and promote acceptance. Whereas we urge our community members to report hate incidents to the-
Well, you already did my intro, so thank you. For campus, we are in our 11th week of the semester, and we just hosted our preview day a few weeks ago for future Sea Wolves for these services on campus, for these services on campus. We are also focusing on empowering students ahead of this upcoming election next week. Tomorrow, Associated Students will be hosting an event centered on- Associated Students will be hosting an event centered on Prop 50 to help students, Prop 50 to help students be encouraged to vote and understand the impact of what voter participation means. This initiative is part of our broader effort to- Initiative is part of our broader effort to ensure students are informed, engaged, and ready to make their voices heard at the ballot box. If there are any opportunities within the city of Rona Park where student voices could contribute, or any opportunities within the city of Rona Park where student voices could contribute, or in any way for students to get, in any way for students to get involved, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'd love to collaborate and continue building connections. Please don't hesitate to reach out. We'd love to collaborate and continue building connections between our students and the city. Class, I just love hearing the updates and I really feel like Sonoma State is on the up and up and, you know, it's getting better and Big Blue Weekend was really fun and encouraging to see the students out there and engaged and how hard the leadership, the student leadership is working to really elevate people's awareness of the school. So I'm excited for your new president, presidential candidate. So that's really cool. Yeah, come back and see us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. And I was up on campus today to do a peace poll dedication, and I saw some of the tours going around campus. And there seemed to be a lot of very enthusiastic kids, so that's great. And yes, I do owe you a phone call in regards to sitting down and talking about opportunities for you to engage here in Rona Park, and we want very much for that to happen. So we appreciate the fresh energy that you're bringing, and we look forward to continuing working with you.
Absolutely. And our students are hungry for it, so thank you so much for your-
You have a nice evening.
You too.
Okay, we are now going to move to department head briefings. And first, we're going to welcome, I believe, for his first presentation, interim public works-
Room. This year, I'm not sure what's going to happen yet, but we're going to have some impactful, not sure what's going to happen yet, but we're going to have some impactful storms, I imagine. We do focus on our flood-prone areas and really check outfalls and vegetation, any obstructions, anything like that. We work with Sonoma County Water Agency for Creek Maintenance, Sonoma Water. And we do coordinate a lot with public safety, especially when we're being impacted. Road closures, continually talking to them, coordinating road closures, flooded areas, et cetera. So our main objective is to protect life, property, and infrastructure, maintain essential city services, so ensure timely, accurate communication, and support community preparedness and recovery. So preseason maintenance and mitigation. So vegetation management, we've done vegetation management in Coleman Creek. We're actually actively working on that right now. That's a public works project. Copeland Creek, Crane Creek, Five Creek, and we perform sediment, well, Sonoma Waters performed sediment removal in Coleman Creek, Copeland Creek, and Five Creek. And I will show you a map of that. So as you can see, the red is where they've done sediment removal, and the green is where they've done vegetation removal. And you'll see Coleman Creek, we're actively working right there. And we're still, we should be finishing up vegetation removal this week. And I'm pretty sure we should get most of the channel done. Preseason maintenance and mitigation, we did perform a video inspection of the storm drain from Hartwood to Golf Course. And we just completed going actually from Golf Course all the way through, all the way over almost to Fana. So we're still evaluating that video. We haven't, we didn't find any major obstructions or, you know, pipe collapse or anything like that. So we inspect our culverts, inlets, and clear ditches, tree trimming and vegetation management, which I just previously showed you. One thing people don't realize is during, during these storms, our sewer pump stations are at capacity. So we're continually monitoring that. We get a lot of inflow and infiltration. We're always worried about losing power. So we're always testing our generators and making sure we're ready, we have fuel, et cetera. So we, the last few storms, we've gotten, we're chewing our nails over there sometimes. So we do keep sandbags. We keep our sandbag station stocked and ready, and that's located at the Sports Center. Interdepartmental coordination, public works, we look, you know, we concentrate on infrastructure, debris removal, and field response. Like, like I said, we do coordinate a lot with public safety on the road closures. And a few times last year, we had some rescues in Costco. There were some people stuck in cars in some pretty deep water. So utilities, as previously stated, a big one is our, is the impact on our sewer system. So we're continually monitoring our sewer lift stations. Quite often we'll have extra people on duty physically standing by, watching. And communications. So we have, we have several ways we do this. Usually we do a storm prep memo, which we send to council. We do work with the school district. We recently have been sending them updates because we can pretty much know when Laguna hits a certain level, Margaret Hawn is going to have to be evacuated. So website, social media updates during these events. Some of the alerts, how we do it is Nixel, Soco Alert, city website, social media, and a lot of direct contact. We field a lot of calls. So, and, and sometimes there may be an area that it's, we're just not used to flooding. So we have an issue somewhere, so we'll respond to that directly. We do have a dedicated storm resource page, press releases before major events. This, this last year, we've been working closely with the school district, letting them know we're probably going to anticipate some major flooding. Public education on flood safety and reporting. And information shared on sandbag station, we only have one location, we keep it at the Sports Center. What can residents do? Clear your gutters, drains, and storm inlets. And if you, if they see anything that could create a blockage, definitely they can contact us. Create home emergency kits and go bags. Sign up for alerts and city updates. Utilize the sandbag station in advance of the storms, which is located at the Sports Center parking lot. And avoid flooded areas and obey the load closures. A lot of people like to go around the signs and they end up stuck. So. Response during storm events, we have 24/7 storm monitoring by city crews. We do deploy public work staff. We have them in zones. We'll bring in extra staff. We usually have two people per zone. On-call staff are deployed to those priority areas. Real-time updates and continuously communicating with public safety on road closures are, you know, dangerous areas to stay away from. So here's some of the tools we use. We set alarms on these. So the big one, we, one of the big ones we look at, it's the Laguna de Santa Rosa at Stony Point. There's, there's a stream gauge there. So as you can see there, that's straight from the USGS website. At 84 feet, we set, we set alarm managers and on-duty, duty personnel. When we hit 84 feet, then we're mobilizing. Our RPX West is going to be starting to flood, first one. So we know, we're already out there monitoring that. 85, we're going to start, you know, Redwood Drive. It's still, it's still, you can still maneuver it, but usually if it's still raining, we know it's going to come up, and we just watch it. But you start getting above 85 and we're going to start flooding. 80, when it hits 89, that, that's major flooding. So when you, when you get up above there, like Heimball there at Redwood Drive, it's, it's impassable. So that's one of the tools we use. We also, Copeland Creek, so, and I'll, and I'll show you some of that data. We know when that hits eight feet here, we start monitoring literally in the city hall parking lot, and I'll show you where here. Can see here in February of, in November of 2024 and February of 2025, can see where it hit over that, that nine-foot level. That's when we evacuated city hall parking lot. It's, employees are sent home. This will all be underwater here. So we only hit it twice, but that's another gauge we watch. Post-storm recovery, field assessments and damage, of damage and debris, you know, sometimes, last year we had a couple of times, a golf cart bridge flooded down on Heimball Creek from, from the golf course, twice. So those are, those are things that, you know, that we have to respond to and bring in, we had to bring in a crane twice to get it out of the creek. We were worried about it obstructing flow. Prioritize cleanup and repair efforts. A lot of times when we flood like this, we will, the creeks bring all the sludge up, make it very dangerous. So it's just a lot of physical cleanup. And then afterwards, you know, we always have an after-action review, see what we can do better, how we can respond faster and address people's concerns. So our next steps, it's ongoing weather monitoring and briefings, tabletop exercises, training, equipment, ensuring our equipment's ready to go, lighted barricades, flooded signs. So that, that's just ongoing. Then continue public outreach through the storm season. We're ready. We're prepared, proactive, like I said, you know, making sure that we're, our generators and all of our, all of our equipment's ready to go. Departments, we coordinate, the biggest one is with public safety, letting them know where, where we're going to have major flooding in the roads and what, what we're going to close. And residents, I mean, they're the ones, every now and, we'll have certain areas that we're just not used to flooding and we have, we have a problem. So it may be a clogged out, fallen obstruction somewhere, so the residents are definitely key. And together, we can ensure a safe and resilient community. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that report.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that report. We really appreciate it. And I'll start with my colleagues, council member, please.
Thank you.
Correct. No, wait, five, no, that's not a creek right there, council member. No, there's Crane Creek.
So, so. So the reason I'm curious is because I think right across from the sea in Coleman Creek is Hartwood and those little courts, right?
It is.
And then just across the street and to the south is a creek. What creek is that? Is my question.
That's on the, are you referring to the one on the, on the east side of Snyder there?
Yes.
I don't, I'm not sure what creek that is. I mean, as you can tell, most of the creek has been filled in.
That, that's my question. So.
Yes, that's where we have the field drain.
That's not one of our creeks. We have no responsibility for it.
It's not our property, no.
I mean, I, I hate to, I hate to admit this in public, but I'm not a weather person, and I didn't stay in a La Quinta Inn last night. I'm pretty sure water coming off the hill is, or, you know, water in that field is overwhelming the field, and, and then just kind of, then it starts sheeting across Snyder, right? And I thought that we had that, something, there was something we could do to that creek to kind of catch the water and keep it from doing that, but.
Unfortunately, by the time that happens, I mean, we're usually in those stages, Laguna everywhere, we're at capacity.
Right.
So everything just kind of starts backing up. Now, Hartwood, Hartwood exits right there, about where, where.
The red line was.
Below the Conservation Corps. All their water, daylight's there, which is Coleman Creek on the Golf Course. It actually runs through Honeybee Park, and it, and it daylight's right there. So we videoed all that.
When you say daylight, what is?
Outfall, big pipe, you'll see it rushing out. And physically, we've been out there, and during these really high storm events, I mean, in the Golf Course, it's like the Russian River flowing through there. It's at capacity.
So there's, you don't look at that creek and think, gee, there's something we could do here to keep this water from overwhelming that, and then coming into, here's the other thing, too, is eventually, somebody's going to knock on our door and say, we're ready to start talking about developing Northeast Pacific Plan, to which my response is, well, you have a water problem there first.
And, and, and we will issue last time, because they worked on one side, and then the rest of the creek going through all the way to the G section stayed like that. And the vegetation got so ridiculous that some of the constituent were going in the backyard and tried to clean it up. So I'm wondering, are they going to do the same thing? Because I know that is part, it's not the city. I'm sure it is the, the water agency.
Council members, so all that green there that you can see where it says Conservation Corps, all the way almost to that backside of S section, that's, that's our responsibility. And we were in there doing some pretty heavy bed removal. We have to be done by November 1st with, with our stream bed alteration permit. So from November 1st through June, we, we can't do work in that channel. So, so we'll, we'll complete that this year, and then we're going to go back next year and, and do more work in there. I, I think they, we've done a lot of work in there this year, sediment removal, everything in Coleman, and, and I've spoken with, with the water agency, and, and they said that we should see some better drainage.
So what about the other side? Is it part of the completion that you're talking about? Or that side is going to stay the same like last year?
I believe it's going to be improved. I mean, I mean, I think we are doing the best that we can with the resources that we have now. And so, you know.
One of my questions about the sediment removal specifically is, how do they decide where to, some of the water challenges we have in town? We have a lot of water, as you can see, the whole city's just.
All the equipment's there, the shovel.
Oh, the shovel, everything, okay. They just have to show up, ready to take something with them. I watched the video on how to fill the sandbags. I do it a little differently, but I liked learning how to lay them strategically. The height of the water, it's an indicator of the ability for the water to go back down, receive versus not.
Absolutely. Park, although we have not done hydrology study, we pretty much know where the water's coming from, and we pretty much have figured out. So when we have a high tide and the Laguna de Santa Rosa's coming this way, and we want the water to go that way, it meets at Rona Park, which was just, whose responsibility is, is that ours? It is. Okay.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Council members, thank you so much. We tried something different than here in giving you a post-event update rather than a pre-event invite. So we had our annual Halloween carnival this past Saturday, October 25th, from noon to 5:00. If any of you were around, you know that the weather was sporadic. We had to make a game time decision early last week about whether or not we were going to commit to indoors or outdoors. We did end up committing to an week about whether or not we were going to commit to indoors or outdoors. We did end up committing to an indoor event. It rained the entire setup, and then was beautiful during the event, as is to be expected. But ultimately, we do feel like the messaging we sent to the community really allowed a pretty large crowd. I had several people ask me if I thought this was the biggest one yet. And my answer to that question is I have no idea. Without having the ability to compare apples to apples from previous events to this year's being all over the place, it's very hard to say. But we did have a very successful event. We just have a couple pictures in this slide to show you, so you can get a look and feel. Yes, most everybody dresses in costume, both children and adults alike. We had our Aztec dancers and our ballet folklorico dancers. And I want to make sure to publicly recognize Frankie Lemus and the Latino Alliance. Part of our partnership with him is to help bring the Aztec dancers and ballet folklorico. I will say Tuesday before the event, we did not have ballet dancers, and Frankie worked for the rest of the week to make sure that he was able to secure us a group of dancers to perform for our audience. It is one of the highlights of the day, and they opened up the event at 12:15. And then this is our unicyclist, Jeremy. We bring him every year. I don't know if you've seen him riding his unicycle around and juggling, but he is quite, quite the entertainer. And then we did bring back our magician. We've had him all but one of the years we've done Halloween carnival. We tried something different one year, and we went back to Perry because he's so great. He's funny. He brings in new entertainment. He caters to the grownups in the audience through his humor and the kids with his magic. So he's really a great piece of our event. This is me, holding a snake. It was the best 30 minutes of my life. This little snake is a bull python, and it's named Cinderella, and I got to walk around and let people pet Cinderella. She is from the Wine Country Zoological, which you see over here on the right with the turtle. They did rebrand. It used to be Safari Encounters, same group we've always had out there, but now they are just under a different title. We had the animal shelter, and Rona Park staff did a great job representing the city. And then, of course, we had our annual Dia de los Muertos altars. This year, I think they were bigger and better than they've ever been. Again, this is a tribute to Frankie Lemus and the Latino Alliance for putting this together for us. We did also do a community altar, which invites anybody in the community to bring a picture of a loved one that has passed to put on the community altar as well, which invites everybody of every culture to come in and, and celebrate in, in this cultural event. And then we had, for the first time, a trunk-or-tree in some cool cars this year. Again, thank you to Frankie for his partnership for getting this. This is also a last-minute decision because of the rain. They, I mean, I literally, Frankie texted me at 10 o'clock on Friday night and said they're coming. So that was great. We made sure to create space for that, and I think it was a really cool addition to the event. And then we move on to Saturday night. This year, if you recall, we did not do the Haunt, Brew, and Scare Fest. We did instead pivot to just one night of the haunted house being open, and we really just want to give the tech crew at the Performing Arts Center some credit for how much work they do putting that haunted house together. They would do it no matter what for the Halloween carnival, but giving an opportunity to really scare people at night is something that brings them great joy. Our registrations for this event were very low going into the evening of. So on Friday, we did a last-minute 24-hour scream code for $5 off. It did tick up the tickets a little bit, but we were still only hovering at around 100 the night of the event. I showed up with my family around 8:30, and there was a line out the door. And I'm happy to report that we actually ended up having 245 people go through the haunt that night, which was wildly successful. From my, from what I saw, there was people of all ages, teens, adults, families, no one small. We did not recommend this for under 13. And we don't have a lot of pictures from inside the haunt. As you can imagine, it's hard to capture a photo, but I did include this video of my mom, my sister, and my nephew going through it at the Halloween carnival. This was during the scary time at the carnival. I did not, I did not ask my mom for permission to use this video. It's implied. So yeah, ultimately, we feel really happy with how the event went. I'm really proud of my team for pivoting and doing something a little bit different. So I'm happy to entertain questions. Thank you to those of you who were able to come, and we look forward to next year's event.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you for that presentation. We appreciate it and all of the events you do. Turn to my colleagues, please, council member.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the work that went into it. I know when I got there right at noon, and it was gorgeous outside, and I thought, I'll bet you it was pouring just before. So I appreciate the forethought. If you hadn't had them inside, and you hadn't had the tents, it would have been pouring outside. That's just how it works. But there were tents set up, and people, you know, getting food from the food trucks, and then being able to sit under the tents and talk with each other. It was really great. That's just a really great time. I did notice that the altars were sort of bigger and better, and that was nice to see as well. I did get a chance to go through the haunt on Friday. That was enough for me. I think I threw my back out jumping once. It was, it was just startling, right? The one thing that I really appreciated was going inside and seeing the kids lined up, get their face painted, and waited to hear a magic show, and seeing the dancers, and, you know, kind of wandering out, and they were doing crafts in one room, and go down the hallway to see the, you know, all the little animals. And my favorite was the pink-toed tarantula. I didn't know there was such a thing, right? Did you, did you know there was one? Kudos for you for carrying around the snake. I think you might want to have your mind examined for that. But it was a great event, and I really anticipated, you know, having a great time, and I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, council member.
Thank you, Cindy. The snake part, I did it once in my life, and that was it. Can't do it anymore. But it was great to see that. The turtle was so cute. So the event was great. And once again, I noticed the, the tent, that was a plus for me, seeing that, because even though it was going to rain, people still could have sat outside and have the food. Seeing little kids and even babies coming, and the art room was just amazing. There was a lot of kids in there. At some point, I felt a little bit claustrophobic because there were so many of them. They didn't care. They were having fun, which is the purpose. But again, there were families that were there, and the purpose of those events is to bring families together so that they can make, create memories. And so you caught that. And kudos to you and your whole team for always bringing something new and incorporating our culture, valuable cultures into those events. So I really liked that day, and yeah, looking for next year, but not missing the haunted house, though. But that was great.
Mayor, can I say another thing I missed?
Absolutely.
During my presentation, and based on something that both of you said about the tents being up there, I do want to make sure to recognize a local business, which is The Rental Place. Again, we did not have plans to have this event indoors, and I called Chris from The Rental Place on Monday of last week and asked if this was possible. And despite the fact that he was very busy already, he made it happen. I believe he got here at like 9:30 at night on Friday to set those up, and then left to go set up another event down at the high school. So, you know, we have a really great partnership and community business in The Rental Place here in Rona Park, and they always come through when we need stuff like that. It was, that was my baby.
To be able to take the family to an event, to be able to take the family to an event and have some diversion that doesn't cost anything, and have some diversion that doesn't cost anything, you know, our Measure M money thing, you know, our Measure M money working hard, right, for the city of Rona Park, is just, working hard, right, for the city of Rona Park, is just, it's great. And you, and you, it's great. And you, and you curate all that. And that's where it's at. So you curate all that. And that's where it's at. So, okay, we'll move on to public comment. Any persons wishing to address the council that is on an item that is not on the agenda? We have three speaker cards tonight. Welcome, Patrick Monday, please. You have three minutes.
Thank you. And it sort of pains me to have to even say this. My name is Patrick Monday. I live in Sommo Village, and my 15-year-old is a student at Credo High School. You may be wondering why I'm up here addressing you now that Resenergy has apparently left the state. First, let me thank you for your highly unorthodox treatment of Resenergy's permit requests. Once word got out, your issuance of a permit request, once word got out, your issuance of a permit in direct violation of several provisions of your own zoning code, and your stonewalling of our repeated demands to revoke the permit for grounds, or at least agendize the item, helped awaken an incredibly energetic, intelligent, compassionate, and creative community of people who care about the health and the prosperity of our local residents and environment. While some few of us have, as always happens, gone back to sleep, and while many of us, myself included, have taken or are taking some time to rest after the high levels of output required to get a grip on what was happening and then do something about it, I'm here to report that I am the tip of the iceberg, and that we are still very much awake and very much organized. I am here to tell you that we know that eventually Sommo Village will seek to lease that space Resenergy is supposed to vacate to another renter, and we'll be keeping a very close eye on how you handle that, and indeed, how you comport yourselves and manage the city overall. Thank you, and good night.
Good night. Peter Alexander? I don't see him. Peter Alexander? I'll come back to him. Maybe he's stepped out for, okay. Steve Keith, please. Oh, that's for 9A, I'm sorry. Anyone else wishing to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, and we'll go to our consent calendar. And do any of the council members need to pull, make a comment on any of the items? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar forward.
Does that have a second?
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote of affirmation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries 4-0 with one absentee.
Exactly. You can be the clerk now.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the first item, which, which is actually a second bite of the item, apple, 9A, to hold a public hearing to consider adopting and waiving the second reading of the ordinance repealing and replacing chapters 15.04 through 15.28 of Title 15 Building and Construction of the Rona Park Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2025 California Building Standards Code of the State of California, Regulations, Parts II, 2.5, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, with local amendments as, amendments as set forth in Chapter 15.04, 15.08, the building code, 1512, the residential code, 1516, the electrical code, 1518, the mechanical code, 1520, the plumbing code, 1522, the energy code, 1524, existing building code, 1526, the green building standards code, 15.28, the fire code, and adopting a new chapter, 15.30, Wildland Urban Interface Code to Title 15 Building and Construction. Can we have a staff report? And I did all that without my glasses on. I'm noting that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, and council members. I will do a brief presentation or update on this particular item. First of all, I also want to publicly acknowledge the hard work of our Director of Development Services, Ally Judith. She actually, today is her last day. She's retiring from city service. And interim Director of Development Services, Mario Landeros, will be supporting us in that department. And so I also have Aaron Hall, our Fire Marshal, here to provide any answers to any questions you may have. As was read by the mayor, we do have this ordinance before you to amend, do the necessary amendments to our building codes. And this is required to be done before January 1st of 2026. And as you pointed out, we do have a public hearing today at the At the last council meeting on October the 14th, we did introduce this item, and we presented to you this item. During the time of the item being presented to council, there was a recommendation to expand our local public outreach, and I'm pleased to report that we did various ways of promoting these changes to the code. We posted it on social media. We also have flyers, especially here at City Hall. We also provided information to our, at our various city facilities. And of course, there's, if you go to the main website or our webpage in the city, there, you can see that there's a direct link to this. We also published twice in the Community Voice newspaper, and we also sent a notice to the North Coast Builders Exchange and local developers just for awareness. And we, we can continue receiving comments on this particular subject up until the point, obviously, that we adopt this, the codes, which is again before January 1st of 2026. So very pleased with the outreach that our staff has taken, and of course, if there's any questions throughout the process, we are more than happy to answer those. Typically, you know, any, any contractor that will be impacted by this, they usually know that every three years, we go through this process of updating codes. So it's, you know, it's a pretty routine process that contractors are aware of, and they know that this is coming. And so at this time, we're happy to entertain any questions, but we're ready to move forward, Mayor, with recommending that we adopt this ordinance to do the necessary updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Before we do that, we will open the public hearing. And would anyone from the public like to speak on this item? We have a speaker card from Steve Keith. Please welcome, Steve. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening. When you're talking about discretion, we, we had concerns about how staff tends to turn over, and sometimes your neighbor might be approached one way about a particular violation, and another neighbor might get approached a completely different way about a violation. I bring up an explanation, the example of traffic enforcement and issuing citations. It's not uncommon for law enforcement agencies to have the policy of discretion in issuing those citations. Simply, the officer is given the discretion by asking the question, do they believe that this behavior will change, a modification of this behavior will occur upon a warning, given issued a verbal warning? If that's the case, then the, the officer has the discretion to just give a warning. However, if the, the officer doesn't believe that the behavior will be modified through a warning, then a citation is issued. That's a more blanket, broad approach to what we mean by discretion, and that's, I think, that's what I was talking about. So I don't know, perhaps maybe later on in the meeting, adding stuff to the next, perhaps it needs to be a whole new agenda item. I, I'm not sure. I'll leave that to the discretion of the city attorney. I guess last 20, 20 seconds or so, another question I have about, is there, does the code allowed for discretion elsewhere?
Discretion, but where there isn't discretion, it's because the state has determined that there cannot be discretion. And so there's a lot of, you know, the question is, has the state preempted the city's ability to create more discretion than what was previously allowed in the state statute that allows for some discretion, but in limited circumstances?
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Would anyone else from the public like to speak on this item? In that case, we'll close the public comment. Any questions or a motion?
I just have a couple of very minor questions, if I could.
Absolutely, please, proceed.
City Manager, you're answering the questions?
Yeah, or the, or the city attorney.
Okay. So just really minor, the one that sort of caught my eye, probably because it happened in our neighborhood, with people getting solar, they found out that they had these Zinsco panels on the side of their house, and one neighbor was told he had to move his, and another neighbor was given an exception. And so I guess my question is, is that's sort of called out here? Is that settled by this, or is there, because it, it seems like there's still some discretion, like the building inspector can come out and say, well, in this case, you don't have to make a change, and in this case, you do have to make a change. And the reason why I'm asking that question is because in the early language up here, it says, hold on, I gotta go back to it. Does that make sense, the question I'm asking you?
So if I'm, I'm understanding correctly, the question, Councilmember Adams, is perhaps what, I guess the circumstances under which maybe one resident can be allowed to have, you know, their solar project in a certain way?
Yes, yeah.
And in another instance, that perhaps it's, it's treated in a different way. So that would be a question that, you know, our, our building inspector, which is not here at the time they're actually out on training, we can follow up and, and find out particularly if you have a specific address or neighborhood, that would probably be the best, unless, you know, our Fire Marshal can respond to that.
No, I, I think he can, yes. Thanks, hi, Aaron.
We welcome the Fire Marshal. Good evening.
One more time.
One more time. That should do it.
Red is good.
Red is good?
Yeah.
There you go. Welcome.
So Aaron Hall, Fire Marshal, and I can make comment on this based on the conversation I had with...
...to each other, and I, I appreciate that. To each other, and I, I appreciate that. And it makes perfect sense, right? I mean, the, the name of the game here is prevent fires.
Yeah, yeah.
And as their neighbor, I really appreciate that. The other question is...
Is this gonna be for Aaron as well?
No, I don't think so, but just...
Thank you.
You never know. In, in section 15 dot 04 dot 070, it talks about a Board of Appeals is hereby, oh, my computer's not working very well here, but it says a Board of Appeals is hereby created. Is that something we've already done? Is that something that happens after this meeting? Do we have a Board of Appeals? Is that our building board?
Yes, Councilmember Adams, we, in fact, we, it's a three-member board. It's the Board, Building Board of Appeals, and remember that that particular membership calls for certain skill sets...
Yes.
Because of the fact that they are looking at various building codes.
Okay, I was confused because it says it's hereby created, and I thought, well, is that the one we already have, or?
Yes, it's an existing one.
Thanks very much. All right, appreciate it. I don't have any other, I'm ready for motion whenever you're ready.
Thank you. First, I'll turn two.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a question. I'm ready to, to move the item.
Okay, thank you, council member. Vice Mayor, any questions?
I'm set.
And I don't have any questions as well, so I will entertain a motion. However, whoever entertains the motion must read the entire ordinance. No? Because I did read it.
Second reading.
Not on the second reading. Okay, so a simple motion will suffice.
I'd like to move the item forward.
Does that have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, is this gonna be a roll call vote? Please, call the roll.
Just to clarify for the record, is a motion is to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance?
Correct.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Elwer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez is absent. Vice Mayor Sanborn?
Yes.
Mayor Judice?
Aye.
Motion passes by 401, with Councilmember Rodriguez absent.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 9. B, consider request to add Steve Hummel to the city's honorary citizen plaque located at City Hall. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. This is actually a request that came from Councilmember Adams, which I'll turn the floor over to her at this time. But the item is before you because our city protocols indicate that if there is a request for any kind of recognition in terms of a plaque or award, that it be brought forward to the council for consideration, or depending on which, you know, commission board or the type of recognition, that would go to the appropriate governing body. So at this time, I'll allow Councilmember Adams to share the reasons why we would like to recognize Steve Hummel.
Thank you very much. I, I had become acquainted with Mr. Hummel in business context, and after some period of time earlier in the year, he and his wife were shopping at a local market, and, you remember that now? And some crazy person started to, to spray bear spray at people all over the place. And without thinking of anything except trying to protect other people, Mr. Hummel basically tackled him and was able to actually save an employee's life in Walmart. I think he, he lost one of his eyes, and, I mean, this is just a horrendous situation. A couple of days after that, something happened to his wife that kind of was tangentially related to that. So this was just one bad, horrible thing after another. But it goes back to the original, without any thought for his own safety, he, he stepped in and, I think, averted a horrible situation. This, or, I had spoken to the mayor earlier in the year about just providing a recognition, and then I thought, you know, we haven't, this council hasn't done an honorary citizen, and this seems to me to maybe reach that level to, to, you know, recognize somebody. It's sort of odd, because, you know, we put this out and brought this gentleman's name up to the level of conversation, and the four of us could say, yeah, no, we don't want to make him an honorary citizen, so. But at that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I just would ask the council to consider, to consider this. Then he and his family would come to us on November the 18th to receive the, the recognition, and then the honorary citizen recognition as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Adams, and thank you for bringing this to our attention. Before we have our discussion and deliberation, anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none? Any questions from council or a motion?
No, I would like to stand your motion.
Perfect. And before we go ahead and take our vote, I think he's a hero, straight up, and I think we should be recognizing him. And he almost got himself into a very, very, very dangerous situation, and for a citizen to take that initiative to protect the lives of his fellow citizens, that is just, I mean, I'm...
...which was in conflict with our ribbon cutting.
Okay.
So I, I did hear, did hear a report out from our Cotati City Councilmember, who attended, and he said it was an excellent meeting. They've elected new officers, and I just want to remind people that this, this library is not your mother's library.
And of course, Councilmember Rodriguez is the chair, and of course, Councilmember Rodriguez is the chair of the Education Committee, the Two by Two by Two, and the Education Committee is focused on working with regional representatives and legislators regarding ADA enrollment findings. ADA, the average daily attendance, is how school districts receive funding instead of per student enrollment. This means that we could have 1,000 enrolled, but if our average is 750 in attendance, Cotati Rona Park Unified School District only receives monies for the 750. And just a, I, I'm, I'm on that committee as well. Report from Superintendent Terry regarding the, report from Superintendent Terry regarding the drill, and what we may be able to do to improve our, 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 our warning system moving forward. And that concludes her report. And then Zero Waste, please, Vice Mayor.
Thanks. I was just paring down my notes to a more digestible summary. It was a great meeting, as always, you know how much I love waste reduction. So we got a quick update on the results of a grant-funded solar panel recycling, collection and recycling pilot project that Zero Waste is doing. Not a lot of folks out there are doing this, so as always, Zero Waste is quite a leader. Working with CalRecycle, they took $100,000 of this grant, administrative building for Zero Waste Future Home. So right now, they're, as I understand it, kind of piled like a clown car into one cubicle, where they literally cannot all operate in the same office. On one day, they don't fit, and there's only nine of them on staff. So I'm sure Leslie will have an update on, on stats, on the metrics around that, but always a great reminder that reusing, repurposing is the, the best line of defense. And then by the time we have our next meeting, I should have a date set with the chamber, they're gonna be doing a ribbon cutting for the first in the state recycling system that's self-serve. So instead of going in front of Flipside Thrift, there's a recycle center where you can take your cans, bottles, get cash money from a human there at that facility. There's now gonna be...
He, he basically showed us where all the money was and how to go get it, and now basically showed us where all the money was and how to go get it, and now he's gonna do some, some studies, he's gonna do some, some study sessions so that, and the state going, and the state going into the county and then matriculating out into the various jurisdictions. And more to come on this. This was all born on, as a result of the mayor's desire to get together in January and talk about three, and talk about three topics that can, topics that concerned all jurisdictions. And so the first topic concerned all jurisdictions, and so the first topic was this, homelessness and mental health. The second is going to be disaster preparedness. You saw a little bit about that tonight. And then, of course, the last is shared services, which is very important to the smaller jurisdictions that are on the periphery, right? The use of their facilities by people from the unincorporated areas. And so I get started, and just thank you to the Federal Highway Transportation Commission, or whatever they're calling themselves now, and also to, for the initial 400 million. Thank you to Caltrans and, and the State of California for not only the next 200 million, but an additional 50 million over the course of four years. And of course, the remainder will be funders who on a daily basis will get left behind because, who on a daily basis will get left behind because of this gap. Smart Stop Service at 10 o'clock, and so there are no bus operators right now. Once Golden Gate backs out, that will, that are performing that service. So the board was very uncomfortable with that, and so they voted to withdraw the item from the agenda. And then we're going to reconsider it in November, and we gave our general manager marching orders to go and meet with the other transit agencies and see if there is some solution. Perhaps Sonoma County Transit can send a bus from Petaluma down to Nevada to capture these folks.
Panel, and of course, we had a keynote speaker. The panel was a collection of four different small business owners, just talking about all of their struggles and, you know, the reality of what it takes to keep a business going, and how they stay inspired and positive, and how they've acquired this drive and passion from, a lot of them from their parents, and how they've, they're passing that on. So it's definitely generational for a lot of small business owners, and yeah, it was a great meeting. Of course, everything was very positive, and they were all just really generous with their time and insights, and then we got the most depressing economic update ever. But, but the speaker knew that he was, he was gonna be delivering that, so it was no surprise. But if you get a chance to attend next year, I hope you do.
Thank you. I'll turn to communications. Anyone have...
Mayor, can I make a comment about the...
Sure.
The Education Committee, about the school funding?
Sure, you could, it's a great segue to communications. You go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to explain the situation that our school district is facing based on the, the money that we receive per student. So these have all to do with local control funding formula that we call the LCFF. And most cities like Hillsburg, the tax, the tax, the property taxes is higher than, than Rona Park, and combined with Cotati. So rich cities get better funding for some reason, and those that have less property taxes gets less. So something in the legislation need to change based on the equity portion of, of what we're dealing with. So that's the, what I wanted to let, you know, our constituent know, that they are the, the driven voice that need to advocate for that on a state level.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Other communications? I have some, but my colleague's a chance? No? So we cut the ribbon on the smart path between Santa Rosa and Rona Park. It's, you know, we have a lot of connectors, thanks to our creek system, that run from east to west, but we don't have any that run north to south. So the nice thing about that smart path is it will intersect all of those pathways that go from east to west. It's going to increase the connectivity in our community. And now, once the Crane Creek Trail is completed, and we go up to the park, you can actually get from Santa Rosa, go all the way down to Rona Park, make a left to Copeland Creek, and go through SSU and get up onto the park. So that's exciting news. Today, I was at SSU for a very heartwarming dedication. Not only did they dedicate the peace pole, but they planted a Hiroshima tree from seeds, from the surviving tree that survived the blast when we dropped the nuclear bomb on Hiroshima. It was quite moving. The deputy counsel, the Japanese deputy counsel that was there, the Rotary Club, the Rotary Clubs, we had of large attendance. It was, it was really very, very touching, and I, there's hope, you know, I'm very hopeful. So, so that was great. Any other communication? Okay, adding agenda items to a future city council meeting? Okay, we'll go right to one last crack at public comment, and we see Lisa. Welcome.
Thank you. Lisa Orloff, CEO...
Lisa Orloff, CEO of the Rona Park Chamber of Commerce. I do have an announcement from the chamber. Those of you who haven't read one of my 6 million emails I sent out. So many of you know that it's been on my radar for the last couple of years to find my replacement so I can transition into a part-time position and spend more time with my grandkids. So I'm not going away, but I'm pleased to announce that I will be transitioning to the role of Director of Events and Community Engagement, jack of all trades. You'll still see a lot of me. Super excited to announce that Kathy Slack. Many of you know Kathy. She's been associated with the chamber with 20-plus years, as on our board, an ambassador, emcees our events. She'll be the new Chief Executive Officer. With this change, we did make some changes to our administrative staff. We had to eliminate our administrative assistant position. Anne Mogul will continue as our office manager. And with any change, there's a lot of emotion involved in this, but we're very excited and we'll still provide the amazing service that we provide our businesses and the partnership with the city. We really appreciate it. So I just wanted to share that news.
Yeah, and I don't normally comment on public comment, but I can, think I can speak for the entire council in saying what an amazing job that you have done over the years. You're such a pleasure to work for, with, for. And although you're irreplaceable, if anyone could replace you, it would be Kathy Slack. So we're very excited and glad that we can still work with you on the crab feed and some of those other events as well. So thank you for saying that and we appreciate it.
Yes, I will definitely be around. It's a part-time position, but you all know that my full-time position is...
Yeah, you don't know part-time.
60-plus hours. So pardon, my husband says, is it really gonna be part-time? But it will just allow me some flexibility to not have to be here for every single event. But you'll see me at all the big ones and all the luncheons and all that.
Yeah, you're very good.
So thank you for those kind words.
Thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.